This meeting of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees was previously called to order. The presence of a quorum has been established and the meeting has been duly called. Notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. Thank you all for being here. We have reconvened from executive session with a little action to follow, but first we will say the prayer and the pledge, Mrs. Nation.
First I want to thank you for bringing us here today, coming together to make decisions for the benefit of over eighteen thousand students in our district. I ask for your protection of the plans of American experiment of one nation under God. Let us not forget that this country was founded with your blessings. Give us good grace to move forward knowing that we were in this place at this time to fulfill our role as public servants. I ask you to die within representing your values and exhibit me the qualities that shine bright in you. Help us remember your words. Yet those who wait for the Lord will gain new strength. They will mount up with wings like eagles. They will run and not be pitied. They will walk and not become weird. For difficult decisions make us weird, but we claim your promise. Guide us to the decisions that will best serve you. Lord, we ask you to heal our community. Lead us to the forward in grace and strength so that we can grow together for the benefit of all. I thank you for those who live to fess up in prayer and I ask that you see the heart hearts of those who hold feelings. Bless all who are here tonight and give us, Lord, the will and knowledge to make the most appropriate decisions. Guide us to make it through the COVID-19 pandemic in a way that the needs of all our students are met and the education where it was provided moves each of them substantially to success once we now have them. I ask you to say what you believe my Lord is saying.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you for that, Dr. Nation. Okay, as I mentioned earlier, we do have a little action coming out of executive session, and that is the hiring of principal of Dixie Elementary. Marty?
Board, Mr. President, Mr. Washman, public, we are pleased to bring Ms. Kimberly Simmons to be the new principal at Dixie Elementary. She's here tonight with her husband. Ms. Simmons currently resides as an assistant principal at Owens Elementary. She's also a Tyler ISD graduate. We're extremely excited that we're able to have one of our own leading Dixie Elementary now and for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion for this item?
I'm going to get with Kimberly Simmons as principal of Dixie Elementary.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, six oh. Ms. Simmons, are you here this evening? Would you like to come to the podium and just say a couple of words?
Good evening, Board President, Mr. White Washman, Superintendent, Dr. Marty Crawford, and to the remaining members of the school board. I want to start off by saying thank you so much for this opportunity. I am here with my husband, Justin Simmons. He is an assistant principal at John Tyler, and we are Tyler natives and proud products of Tyler ISD. We have two children, a one-year-old son, Jackson, who just turned one in the summer, and then Kyler is five, and she will be in kindergarten this year in Tyler ISD. So we are very invested in this district, and it is a blessing and an honor to be able to serve in the district that raised not only me, but my husband as well. So once again, thank you so much for this opportunity, and I can't wait to get started.
All right, thank you and congratulations. It is always exciting to see graduates come back and serve in the district that they went to. So congratulations again, Ms. Simmons. Okay, now we're coming up to public participation. I do believe we have twelve speakers tonight. Everybody's gonna have three minutes apiece this time, since we have a few less than the last couple of meetings. We'll give you a little more time. First, we have Charlotte Adams Graves. Hi, Ms. Graves.
Good evening, Mr. Washman.
Good evening.
I hope I said that right. And to the Tyler ISD School Board, my name is Charlotte Adams Graves, the president of NHPC East Texas Area Chapter. I'm a retired administrator and a guidance counselor. What I have learned is that as an educator, your job is to not only care about our students, but to do everything in our power to help them reach their full potential. I believe we sometimes fail at this because we believe our job is to merely give assignments and look at data. It is so much more. It's about closing the gap, making the school wide responsibility. It's about bringing the staff together to ensure students are monitored and conference monthly to discuss grades and social needs. It's about hiring faculty and staff who understand and can capitalize on our students' culture and abilities. It's about giving parents tips and tools on how to prepare their child with a district-wide calendar, all the which I have experienced in doing that. At my previous campus in Colleen Independent School District, I counseled their grade watching. They pulled data every Monday to counsel with students during their lunch period instead of just doing testing of paperwork. We also made brag calls to the kiddos' homes instead of reporting their failures or need improvement. As a result, students only, only, they worked hard to receive those brag calls, but we found their test scores also dramatically improved. Tyler ISD School Board test scores disparity are a big issue for me and should not be taken lightly, so I challenge you, just as Freeman Sterling would say, "Do it. Make sure that we're taking care of all of the students." Have a good evening.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Graves. Okay, next up we have Clayton Nail. Hi, Clayton.
Members of the school board, my name is Clayton Nail, and I am here as a teacher, a parent, and a citizen of Tyler, Texas, to urge you to consider the true weight of the decision before you about opening our schools. While many people want to see a return to normalcy, the current scientific data does not support that as a safe and viable option. TEA has already made provisions for school districts to spend the first four weeks of the school year as online-only, with the ability to extend that an additional four weeks. Smith County currently reports 1,762 cases with ten deaths in regard to COVID-19, which gives us a little over half a percent mortality rate in our area. To some, that may not seem like a lot of people, but let's consider the actual impact. Tyler ISD employs over 3,000 people and hosts just over 18,000 students. Are we willing to sacrifice the lives of fifteen employees and ninety students for the sake of returning to normal? I understand that either decision you make of returning to campuses or staying home is going to upset different parts of our community. However, one of the options upsets people while flattening the curve and keeping people healthy, and the other option increases exposure and infections that can lead to death. The teachers of this district are more well-equipped to handle online teaching and learning environments than they were in the spring. The investments into Canvas and one-to-one devices already show that you have faith in that ability too. Let those investments save the district the cost that will invariably come from opening our schools and exposing every staff member to a virus that mandates a minimum fourteen-day quarantine after positive testing. Let that investment propel equality and equitable access to all of our students. If you still support opening our campuses as we watch the numbers of infections and deaths continue to rise, I ask that you first make a list of the names of fifteen employees and ninety students that you are willing to let die. If you still support opening our schools after completing those lists, then I fully expect to see them published with the return orders along with the enrollment of your own children into on-campus education. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nail. Okay, next we have Michael J. McDermott. Hi, Mr. McDermott.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to address you. My name is Michael McDermott, a Tyler resident of many years, and God willing, many more. I believe it was Chairman Washman who said, "There's too much race and not enough grace." I'll long remember those words when people talk about them wanting too much, as was done in the parking lot last week. If we give them too much, they'll want more. These hurtful words often lie below the public statements of a school name having no meaning. It's benign. Truth be told, it's not. Public education is a public domain belonging to we, the people. The great divide is us versus them. This thinking has us where we are today. As a city and nation, we can do better. Biblical references to the word justice mean to make right. Justice is first and foremost a relational term. People living in right relationship with God, one another, and the natural creation. From a scriptural point of view, justice means loving our neighbor as we love ourselves and is rooted in the character and nature of God. As God is just and loving, so we are called to do justice and live in love. The physical school structure is almost finished. Waiting us is what happens inside. This rests squarely on your shoulders. Justice must be served, or a segment of our charges will not participate in Tyler's tomorrow. It won't be as bright as it could be and should be. Let me pose an analogy. When a superior football team plays a less talented, there is an unwritten rule, the coach of the superior team won't run up the score. He puts in his less talented players, giving them an opportunity to play they might not have had. Likewise, the losing team can choose to do the same, knowing the final score will not be affected. This is fair play, sportsmanship, teaching everyone an important lesson. Even though we're competitors, we ultimately have valuable gifts to contribute. So too in Tyler academics. We have a moral obligation to do no less than allow each student to participate to their full potential. This will positively impact the new school's culture. It's not cancel culture, but change culture. Where a more just environment replaces the old and wounds are healed. Everyone is on a level playing field. Better school, better society, better future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McDermott. Okay, next we have Laura Owens. Hi, Ms. Owens.
Good evening, School Board. Members of the School Board, I'd like to introduce myself. Recently, I've been known more as Trudy's mom, and I think you all know who Trudy is. I'd like to first thank Mr. Martinez. Mr. Martinez, thank you for being a true leader. You are the only one out of all of these people in the room to reach out to my daughter after she wrote her letter and after the terroristic threats, and our family truly thanks you from the bottom of our heart for your leadership. To the rest of the board, one doesn't have to look far to see the institutional racism that is infected and continues to wound our students. One only has to look around this very room. In this room right now, we have administrators who use the N-word in their offices, ones that punish students of color at disproportionate rates, ones that endorse curriculum that still holds false narratives about Black, Indigenous, and other persons of color, and ones that grant school and district transfers to affluent white families who didn't even follow the rules. Just ask Mr. Lowe, a Black father who followed the protocol for school transfers, and you denied him last April, this past April. How do you explain that? Your "return to learn" plan disproportionately puts students of color in a position of being left behind or choose face-to-face learning even when that might not be the safest choice for that student. That is a civil rights issue. Local investigative reporters, here is your chance. Right here in front of you is a noteworthy piece ready to be investigated and exposed. My desire for you trustees is to do as our not very distant neighbor Arlington ISD has done. This past June, called for a resolution and ordered an external review of institutional racism within their school district. Are you scared of what we might find in Tyler ISD? When our kids can go to a school where there is equity, our scores will improve. We still have a national spotlight on us. Right now, ESPN is currently doing a three-month-long piece that will carry us through the start of the school year. They started this piece before my daughter's letter came out. The journalist has spent this last month interviewing your teachers, parents, students, and community members. The piece is going to end in one of two ways, and we have the choice to figure out which way it's going to go. Number one, Tyler ISD can continue to victimize their students through institutional racism. Or number two, TISD can call for a resolution for an external review and then use that information to create a plan of healing through racial reconciliation. That ESPN journalist is online right now. Board members, what will the ending be?
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Owens. We have Stacy Clark next. Hi, Stacy.
Good afternoon. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Stacy Clark, and I'm the mom of two school-aged Black daughters, the oldest of which is still at TISD. I'm gonna get off my notes here for a second. As a white woman and person raised in this community, I know the white rhetoric, okay? It's not that bad. They're making a big deal out of nothing. The past is the past. I was raised with these racist ideas in my mind so that we could continue on promoting white people, white students, and persecuting minorities in our community. I've been overwhelmed with the issues that my Black daughters face. I'm asking for you to pass a resolution ordering an external review for our district addressing and identifying systemic racism. The reasons this review is necessary are too many to count. As a mother, I'm bothered that my Black children cannot go to school and come home having experience a day free from teachers and administrators who perpetrate our children based on the color of their skin. This also harms the white students. This is another thing I'm gonna add. This is off my little notes. When white students grow up in this environment that promotes Black children being punished more, the racism, you know, then they perpetuate it, and they grow up with ideas that are false, and that's how they treat it, and it goes on and on, and it's time to stop. So here's the first incident, there's been many, but the first one at fourth grade Bryce Elementary, my daughter had a crush on a white boy. That white boy happened to be the teacher's son. When the teacher found out about the crush, she felt it necessary to announce to the whole class, "By the way, my son is not allowed to date Black girls." Now imagine that, my daughter was doing something that was developmentally appropriate and shamed by her teacher in front of her whole class. And that was the first time she really experienced, you know, like, you're Black, you're not good enough in school. Fast forward, this past spring, while meeting with the Hubbard administration at Hubbard about the disappropriate discipline principles for Black students versus white students, in an attempt to explain away the issues, I was told by an administrator, "We have a Black assistant principal." That response was akin to saying, "See, we have a Black president, so racism is dead in America." Board of Trustees, you have a duty to make sure all students have a safe place to learn with educators that are educated in teaching and preparing students. So tonight, I'm asking you to call a resolution similar to that of Arlington ISD to review the systemic racism happening in our schools perpetrated by our teachers and administrators. And we will be here each month asking and demanding until you do this. The time is now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Clark. Next we have Nikisha Allen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I will be the first to address the board in a sequence of people who want to give a collective statement, but due to the time constraints, it will be broken out amongst us. When my time expires, there will be six other people to follow where I left off. First, we would like to express how pleased we are with unanimous vote to change the names of both our flagship high schools. We believe this is a great first step in breaking down one of many barriers in our school districts for our minority students. We need to rid the district of any Confederate symbolism. There's a plaque right now at Hubbard Middle School honoring Richard Hubbard, and the plaque literally uses Confederacy in its words. Thank you for taking care of this matter.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Allen. Next we have Wilma Daniel Mitchell. Good evening, Ms. Mitchell.
Good evening. My name is Wilma Daniel Mitchell. Stated again, I too would like to thank the board for unanimously voting to change the names of our two local high schools, although that's the tip of the iceberg. It's easy to change a name, but it's difficult to change a mindset and a heart, so I would like to thank you for starting with the name changes. I, as a non-board member citizen, know that we have lots more work before, so I hope you as board members know that as well. We the people, we have several concerns about the future of our school's district. The process to choose the names of schools needs to include input from the community as well as the students. We have a model of how to process, that process should go from our last bond, school bond. We can meet at different locations and allow the community to attend those meetings. The location should be easily accessible to everyone, making sure to include the African-American and Hispanic communities. We also need to have a website or email in place where ideas, comments, and concerns can be addressed. A committee including a few constituents from each district is ideal. It is important and necessary that the committee members be chosen by our elected board members, prominent community leaders, and not just TISD administration. I'd like to say that again. It is important and necessary that the committee members be chosen by our elected school board leaders, prominent community leaders, and not just TISD administration. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Next we have Taquan White. How you doing, Mr. White?
Good, and you? We the people, there needs to be explicit bias training for every staff member in the school district to be recertified annually. With the climate of the country and the divisions shown daily by media, it is imperative to keep those biases out of our school. There are also people who are not happy about the school names changing, and we need to be sure that doesn't spill on our children. Students and staff need to know they're safe to report inappropriate action, comments, behavior, et cetera, with the confidence that they will be properly, effectively investigating if necessary, handled accordingly. Non-white students receive more disciplinary actions than white students. And again, specifically, Black boys, this is another area that training will help. What kind of special training is there for officers and security guards for working with students, particularly students of color? If there isn't any, how can we get this done? My name is Taquan White, and thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Taquan. Next we have Mission Bonner. Hi, Ms. Bonner.
Hi, how are you? Um, let's see. We the people, students are assigned to DAEP based on discretionary placement while others have mandatory placement. There is a huge disparity of Black and Brown students, specifically Black boys, assigned to this alternative campus versus white students who are sent based on discretionary placement. We need to be transparent about why, whose discretion is being used with making this decision? What are we going to do specifically to make sure this is fair across the board? African-American students perform lower academically than any other students in our district, and again, specifically, Black boys. Our district has the La Academia program to help close the achievement gap for Hispanic students. What specifically are we going to do to address the deficit for African-American children? How do we get more minority students enrolled in the GT program and AP classes? Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bonner. Okay, next we have Terry Bonner. Mr. Bonner?
Good evening. My name is Terry Bonner. I'm the fifth speaker today for We the People. The number of Black and Brown students who graduate from the district, as we've seen, is right around ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent, which is well above the state average, which is great compared to other districts, but the number of students who are college-ready, it's only about 6.5%, around 7%. Put that in perspective for you. For every 400 Black graduates, there are 26 of them that are college-ready, okay? That means minority students, and again, specifically, Black boys, test at the lower level than any, at a lower level than any other group of students. This is across the board with ACT, SAT, TSI, and et cetera. What programs and strategies other than Avid can we put in place to get our students ready for college? Also, what can we do to ensure our students graduate with an associate's or a bachelor's degree? It is not enough to simply get them started at the higher-level learning, high-level learning institution. How many Tyler ISD students are actually graduating from college? And that is a big issue in this town, and it kind of stems from the education, from the education standpoint or how well the child is educated. Also, we would like to see an implementation of African-American studies placed at the high school level and also have it be a graduation requirement. For the simple fact, as y'all know, some of these comments that have been online, some people are calling for a mass punishment of these children. And I know children to be children, and I know children to be product of their learning environments. I call for a mass education of these students, you know, the ones that are saying, "Oh, Robert Lee owned slaves, and only, you know, Black people owned 13% of slaves." I have the comments here, I'm gonna decline to read them, but I do call for a mass education of all students on African-American studies, which I feel like is something that this district has lacked in and would help with, I believe, racial understanding, for lack of a better term. Thank you very much. I've been Terry Bonner. Thank y'all again for voting unanimously to change the name of the school, but for a lot of us in this town, that was just the tip of the iceberg. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bonner. Okay, we have Abrielle Jackson next. Hi, Ms. Jackson.
Hello, I'm the sixth speaker for We the People. On the 27th, schools in our district, there are eight African-American principals, and only three of them are male. Of the three male principals, only one, Mr. Floyd, is at a secondary campus. The problem- The problem on top of that is rather than alternative school. Students who attend there already have a defect of some sort. Out of the one thousand two hundred and twenty-three teachers in our district, how many are non-white? Students need to see teachers, principals, counselors, et cetera, who look like them. This allows them to see that, that you are capable of doing great things and give them a greater sense that they belong. What are the hiring practices for our district? How is it decided where principals and teachers will be assigned? What changes are made when there are no improvements at campuses? And also, as, um, a student currently attending, I feel like that our school is, a lot of sex of it is still stuck in the fifties. It's having an effect on students. We're not having fun. We feel like we're entertaining the older generation when we should be entertaining our peers. So I hope that you guys can also evaluate, um, how to modernize more, um, areas of our school with the new name and the new building. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jackson. Okay, our last speaker this evening is Amber Phillips. Hi, Ms. Phillips.
Good evening. I'm the last of the seven. Looking to the upcoming school year, in the middle of an unprecedented pandemic, what are the plans to make sure teachers are committed to the progress of our students? Costs of Chromebooks cannot be the responsibility of the parents. The district needs to provide these to students at no cost to the families unless damaged. There are so many parents that are trying to figure out how to pay for unexpected costs already due to COVID-19. We cannot expect them to take on any more financial responsibility. Last year, children received Chromebooks and had to return them in good condition at the closing of the school year. The same procedure should be used this academic school year. The plan moving forward is to have a transparent relationship with the board and superintendent, with hopes of working together, and we would love to hear from our elected board members regarding items and concerns that we can take back specifically to our communities. So I will see you all next month.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that does it for public participation this evening. Next item we have on the agenda is the approval of minutes from our workshop on June fourth. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Okay, business, legal, finance, and consent agenda. Okay, we have A through I here, and, uh, board, do we want to pull any of these? Yes, we do. Do we want to take them one by one, Dr. Crawford, or do we want to pull E and go ahead and, uh, approve A through I with the exception of E?
Yep.
You want to, okay, you want to pull F, too?
Right.
All right. Okay, so we'll go ahead and, uh, yeah, we'll, we'll go A, B, C, D, G, H, I, and then we'll pull and talk about E and F. Do I have a motion to do such?
Mr. President and I, uh, move that we approve A through D and G through I.
Okay, thank you, Reverend Hager. Do I have a second? All right, Mr. Martinez, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Uh, okay, now, we will go ahead and pull item E and talk about that specific one, the, uh, second reading of our policy on naming of facilities.
Thank you. Um, this is the second reading of the CW Local in regards to naming facilities, until we spend a little time talking about this at the board workshop that we had. The only adjustment we made from the first time to the second time is between item number three and four, uh, that little paragraph that starts with a person whose name, uh, that was actually moved up because it was formerly located behind number four. Um, we also, on item number one, ideals. No ideals. Principal ideals. If you Google that, it has something to do with the math equation. So people use Google all the time. So just went ahead and eliminated because what we were trying to get at was values, et cetera. So it was kind of repeating there. So those are the adjustments that we had on there. Um, open to questions and comments.
Okay, I'll let the board go ahead and chime in.
Okay. I basically don't have any questions regarding the policy. I've, I've looked at, uh, looked at it, and I kind of agree with it. Mine is specifically in regards to the current name change that we're going through, and I voiced the sentiments last week in regards to, my opinion in regards to the election process and how it could be done possibly. I still feel strongly about having input from the community in regards to, uh, a committee, simply because of the amount of input we had going through the controversy of actually getting to the point where we actually could consider naming the school. I think that it's important that we allow the community to have some input on that from the perspective that we want our community to be involved with our schools more so than, than what they've been maybe in the past. Looking at some of the situations that we have in some of the schools where you don't even have the PTA, you know, you wonder why those things don't exist. Is it because the image or the perspective that they get is unwelcoming? So I think it's anytime we have an opportunity to allow the community to have input, I think it's important to allow that, uh, and hearing what they're saying about how they perceive things. And this has been a very controversial issue, so I felt like it would be good to have their input in trying to select the names. You know, the process was described last time. I think I, I agree with that process. This policy is well-written. Don't have a problem with the policy. But this particular instance in regards to the naming of the schools, I strongly feel that there should be a committee of community representation.
So I'll just go ahead and jump into this. The way it's designed right now is you do actually have, um, nine, nine votes from each school. Slots, nine slots from each school. Principal, head football coach slash athletic coordinator, and a faculty member. Three students and three parents. You also have the process of submitting via form starting tomorrow, and we'll go through this back end of the presentation tonight. That everybody in the community with an address in Tyler ISD will be able to submit their recommendation and provide a little bit of brief snippet about why they feel, as an individual, not a group, but as, as an individual, that that name should be taken before the board. And let me address the PTA thing real quick. John Tyler does not have a PTA because it was mismanaged. So let's not blame the campus, prior campus administration or anything else that went on there. But there was an actual, it was sort of lacking in membership. And the one thing that you've got to do with the, with the Texas PTA is to make sure that it, that it, uh, that it maintains a certain level of, of membership. When I first got here, we had one. But the leadership changes in the PTA is when you saw a decline in membership. That's why it's not there. You have to be, not suspended, but you have to be, uh, out of the PTA game for a couple of years, and then you can actually recreate it again. I'm sure Mr. Lane, with all of his experiences and utilization and his twenty-one, twenty-two career, uh, twenty-two, twenty-two-plus career, a year career, will be able to get that re-going again. So if that's what we're talking about here, there are also some other campuses that went through the same thing. So I, I want to make sure that when that statement said, that there is some defense to that and some anecdotal evidence of why that occurred. It was not that we did away with it on purpose. It was because we had poor PTA leadership. Okay, there you go. So that's the other thing on the, on the other side of it. I'm open to what the board, the board would like to do on this. A lot of y'all have expressed expediency. Um, I think if we start talking about the hundred and fifteen thousand people that live inside of our school system or near that, it's going to be very hard to get every one of them into a meeting, a room. I know the ones that are interested would come. I get it. But we're talking about some time here. We also have some other issues that go along with this. We have a new website that's going to be rolling out in August. A name decided prior to that would be something that would be valuable for us. We won't be able to switch our website over to possibly the twenty-twenty-one school year, or twenty-twenty-one year. That's some, those are some other things why we would like to go ahead and get moving on this, because I think y'all expressed that before school started, that we could have this turnaround. That's why we put those systems in place. We put a submission program, uh, in place, uh, just like we do with a lot of surveying, et cetera. And we also have that group that's going to, that focus group that, that I've proposed, that we could actually go forward and utilize them with a pretty diverse representation. I'm very clear about that. For both campuses, we want diverse representations. I can't do anything about who the, the principals are and the football coaches are. They are what they are. They are the ethnicity that they are. But as far as them building the rest of their, their focus group team, absolutely, diversity is extremely important. And we also check off, as far as the parent box, we also check off the student box as well. That's kind of where I'm at right now. Certainly would prefer guidance and would change direction as the board see fits. We serve y'all.
Let me make a comment in regards to, before we discuss that item. In regards to the PTA explanation, great explanation. I think it's real important that the public know those things and that they can hear it from the administration as regards to why it doesn't exist. Sometimes, uh, there are complaints because people are not educated to the facts. So it's important that we do whatever we can to educate individuals when they have questions regarding situations like you just mentioned regarding the PTA. So I, I, you gave a very good explanation, and I think anyone that have any questions will be, should be satisfied with that explanation. Appreciate it.
That man right there is a new principal at John Tyler High School, and I can tell you that my six years with him, he does not lack in communicating with his parents.
Oh.
I, I can't speak to prior, to prior administrations, if they were asked those questions and they gave some other type of answer, that that will be the man that, that folks need to go to in order to get that question. You know, our, our school system is running a little differently.
Right.
And then we have thirty campuses. We have eighteen thousand students. I understand if you go down the road to a smaller school system, the superintendent can answer every one of those questions.
Yeah.
So we've hired an effective principal to run that campus. I think that John Tyler's going to be extremely happy with the parent engagement there as well, along with our other campuses. Ask those, ask the principals that question. If they don't get the answer, or they don't get an answer, we would love to help them out. But the principal should be able to answer that question.
My son attended more middle school when Mr. Lane was principal, so I understand that. We were very active in the PTA, so I know what he's capable of doing.
Outstanding. We're excited.
I support him.
Mr. Newsom, I'll hear, hear about it when I get home if I don't say this. There's an organization called the Council of Tyler PTAs, and they have the mission of supporting all the element, all the school PTAs. And they know in great depth the process of getting a suspended PTA back in good standing with Texas PTA. And so I know that group of folks would love to work, uh, with any campus that currently has a suspended PTA to get them back on track.
Great.
Okay, so back to the policy, and then I think, yeah, let's discuss the, the process that we can have within this policy that we've, we've already alluded to, but do any other board members with actual policy here feel the need to?
Yes, sir. There's, um, one change that I, I think would be prudent for us to consider. I support the policy as written. I would propose that we also add a, a time limit on when to name a facility or a portion of a facility after an individual. And we put a requirement that they no longer be living and that they had, uh, been deceased for more than twelve months. A, we all can think of examples of people who, um, have disappointed us at different stages in life, and I would, um, a policy that says that we wait to name a portion of a building after a person who has already deceased, um, limits the opportunity for them to mess up, obviously, in a way that would cause us to reconsider wanting to have that portion of the facility named. And a twelve-month period after their passing is a little bit of a cooling-off period, so that there's not a quick rush, uh, when someone passes away to honor them in this way. So I support the policy as written. I would propose that we add that, uh, additional requirement to, uh, a individual who we would name a facility after, a portion of a facility.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments regarding the policy in itself and the proposal in which Reverend Hager has made?
I think that's prudent. Prudent change. I have no issue with it. That's what the board thinks we should do. I would favor that.
Yeah, I, I somewhat agree because I had the opportunity to work with an individual that was living, and we were trying to name something after them, and they had a very difficult time with it themselves. So I think that, you know, your restrictions may have some validity to it in regards to that.
I think it also limits kind of the politicking, you know, and the campaigning that goes along with this if we're limiting it to someone who has already passed away.
Ms. Atkins, indoctrination?
I agree. I think it's, it's, um, a good addition. It would, it would take care of. It's, I'm just not talking. I think it's a good idea to add that, and it would, it would take care of maybe some controversy.
Okay. Atkins.
I agree as well. Um, I'm not sure about being dead twelve months.
I've kind of, I don't know, I, just over the last two minutes, gone back and forth on it, you know? And I, if it's the will of the board, I'm, I'm okay with it, and it is prudent. Sometimes I, I do think it's sweet when you can give a gift to somebody that's living. But that's not, this isn't what we're all about anyway, and, um, of course, Andy's not here, but if the majority of the board is, is on, on board with the twelve-month or at least deceased, uh, before they're named, then, you know, I think we should move forward with that. So I see, uh, Dr. Crawford talking to our attorney, Mr. Hardy, and we'll await the result of that conversation.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. I didn't know if that had anything to do with this specific.
I'm concerned about this policy tonight and this board's desire to move on with, with selecting new names. If you, you want to speak up on this, let's let the attorney address the board so I don't mess it up.
We have to.
I'll also try not to mess it up. Good evening, board. Thank you for a quick opportunity to speak. Briefly, Dr. Crawford asked me what are our options tonight in light of the present discussion. Uh, I really see that there are three. You can try to craft some language on the fly and adopt a policy this evening. It really won't have been through our usual process of a first and second reading if you do that. You can vote on the policy that's before you in its second reading tonight, if you choose. Or I think you can essentially kick this down the road and have a, some revision made to the policy and address it at a future board meeting at the cost of perhaps moving as quickly as you would like. I will also point out that while I don't have a position on Reverend Hager's suggested addition, it seems there's some board consensus surrounding that. Anytime we have a local policy, uh, I would point out that either this board or any other future board can simply adopt its own local policy. So I can't tell you that, uh, anything we do as far as, uh, you know, a person being deceased for a period of at least twelve months would have staying power beyond the Tyler ISD board giving it that staying power. I've also separately had questions about could the district have a moratorium on changing names for some period of time, months or years? And the answer is yes, but a future board could also decide no. So just, just want you to be aware of, uh, kind of the impact of that decision and what your options are tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. What I'd propose then is, so I do value the need to progress here. And because the provision that I'm suggesting be added does not impact the naming of a school, but only a portion of a school, that we just go ahead and act on the policy as written tonight. But consistent with our approach for approving modifications to policy, that we put that in the pipeline for a future modification.
Absolutely. One thing that I can tell you that right now, current operations go this way as far as naming a portion of the facility after someone. We just went through that with Martin Edwards, Dr. Martin Edwards, along with Al Harris. February is usually when, if I get, y'all, y'all put this on me because I think y'all are getting bombarded with requests. And so y'all went ahead and said, come up with a system. So it's by February is when that actually happens. And then I actually bring it in front of the board for y'all to vote on. So a recommendation from the administration of the board. So the point is, we got a little bit of time until February. I think we'll probably wind up working on this policy sooner rather than later to insert something that y'all feel it sounds like is most appropriate. So recommendation is to, to vote the policy as is with clear understanding to the administration to work on inserting further language down the road to bring it back to y'all as an adjustment.
Okay, yeah, I think that's wise to do and gives us some time to think about it as well. So I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the policy as it is written.
Just a point of clarification before we vote on this and in regards to the, the makeup of the committee, you explained it and I want to make sure I understand. Each school that John Tyler and Rob Lee Lee will have nine representatives from each school.
Correct.
And three of those will be student representatives and three will be parents and then the other six will be faculty?
Three, three and three. There's nine.
Three, three and three?
There's nine. So you gets a principal, football coach, athletic coordinator.
Okay, athletic.
And then a staff person. Then you have three students and then three parents.
And how are they selected? The principals do that or?
Well, certainly. And I think Mr. Lane would appreciate a little help on the parenting if needed to. But I do think as far, and I'm sure he'll get, he'll ask some of his existing faculty members about students that are there. But I'm sure Dr. C. Lee has a pretty good indication of people that would be fair, people that would be, would take into consideration a lot of, a lot of the factors that are there as well. Including diversity, making sure there's a diverse representation, making up that at, at Lee, like John Tyler.
Okay. And, and before we move, move on, just you spoke a little bit about the timeline, you know? I'm all in, in favor of, you know, expediency and, and like we talked about before, if, when school starts, you know, in a usual year, this, this being behind us and for all your internet, I mean, website reasons and ordering uniforms and everything else. As far as timeline goes, can you just walk us through that little bit, that piece of it, Dr. Crawford?
Do you want it now or do you want it in superintendent's staff reports?
Let's go superintendent's staff reports. Let's go ahead and knock this policy out. Yeah, let's do that.
Move to approve, see debut local.
I have a motion.
A second?
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, the ayes have it and the motion carries. And we will circle back to that process and superintendent's staff reports. Okay. Now, Mr. Newsom wanted to pull F, which is our approval of goals for successful student outcomes. Which is local board policy, A E exhibit, page twenty-four of our packets.
And your packet is our successful student outcome goals. Eighty-sixth legislature that just wrapped up, I would say just wrapped up, that wrapped up last May. That was, yeah, it was the last May, put in, put into legislation that every school system in the state must have goals for early literacy, mathematics and college and career education. We've kind of been living this goal-setting era through Lone Star Governance. When this board in 2016 went through the Lone Star Governance, had meetings at A.J. Crayville's place. When, pretty much got there because we had a campus or two that were chronically low performing. Since then, we've eradicated those low-performing campuses, had some good success stories that came through this goal-setting. And so codifying this policy or this, the goals into policy along with matching that up to each goal at the campus level, which I think is also a requirement of the legislature as well, is something we're bringing for y'all tonight. This is the second reading of these goals as we go forward. So that's where we at. I need to go down to every one of them we can.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll defer to, to Mr. Newsom initially.
Basically, I have a general comment and we've been dialoguing about this. And I, I have strong feelings about the, the disparity between the, the ethnic groups within our district. I, I'm very concerned about the scoring of the Hispanic and the African-American students, which fall significantly behind the whites in a, within our district. So that has been on the forefront of my mind since coming on the board in light of everything else that we're dealing with. But I'm, I'm very concerned about that and I, I have to compliment the district because I know in the past years, it was much worse. And I know that it has improved significantly, but unfortunately, you know, I have high standards. Always have, always will. And I, and I hate to think that we are meeting those standards based on these goals that we have established. I, I don't see it narrowing the gap very much with the goals that's established this time for the next five years. I would like to see something different than the goals that we're submitting, maybe internally within the district, where we actually look at going or superseding the goals that we turn into TEA. Because it means that much to me and, and that we put forth a special effort to make sure that our kids, the minority kids within the community are getting the help they need. And I'm not saying that they're not getting it now and I'm not saying that the district is not doing it. I'm saying that we need to look at all aspects of it. I, I think that we need to have a lot more community involvement. And I, and I, to, to achieve this, it's going to take everyone. So I am disappointed in the goals that was established. When I first read them, I was simply shocked. But I, I can understand some of the situations that we've been faced with. But I think that we can't allow those situations to continue to exist and stifle our children's growth within our community. And we should be targeting those individuals that's not achieving what we would like for them to achieve. So that's the reason I, I'm having problems with it. And, and a lot of it may be just personal because I always had high expectations because I had to, without a doubt. So that's what I see within this particular aspect of it when we look at student outcomes. So I may be exaggerating because I have a tendency to do that sometime, but I have high expectation. And I don't want to lower those expectations because I think that when you lower expectations sometime, that you, you get satisfied with it. And I, I think that that may be what happened with some of them. I think that we are looking at some positive things within the district that will incentivize our teachers, the good teachers that want to do this, to make a difference. So I, I'm not being negative from that standpoint. I'm just, I have higher expectations than what these goals actually say or state. Okay? That's my opinion.
Duly noted. And I think I've got staff in the room that have been working on this for six years. I don't think any of us have low expectations by any means. But it, it takes a while to turn a battleship. Yeah, it's been six years since I arrived here. You and I have had conversations about, or email exchange about what shape we were in.
Right.
And there's no doubt that if the district wasn't making improvement in minority scores, we would be in the same jam we were in when there was ten improvement required schools here, if not worse. So certainly the accountability system rewards growth. I think we are making tremendous growth with our students at the same rate between the ethnicities. One is not outpacing the other as far as growth goes. Now, would I love for our kids that are struggling the most to boost themselves to where their growth is exponential? Absolutely. And I think that we have been very clear with our principals, our campus principals to make that happen. Because it's not going to happen on a thirteen nineteen Earl Campbell Parkway. It's going to happen at each one of our campuses. We've got great stories that are being told at individual campuses, Dixie being one. Dixie being one that was formerly improvement required, Douglas formerly improvement required with a substantial amount of African-American kids, but their, their makeup over there is majority Hispanic and African-American. To where they were a reconstituted school because of past legislation. They're now a B campus because their kids are doing better.
Right.
So duly noted on that and understand that the goal over here, I'll tell you what, it's a heck of a time to be setting goals.
I know.
I'm just going to go ahead and say that.
Oh, yes.
I think everybody understands that. We have some interim assessments that we'll, we'll be doing as soon as we get back. Whether that be digital or in-person learning. And certainly we want to see where our kids are at. And then those, those assessments that will be able to be conducted throughout the year will give us some good feedback as far as where we're attaining those goals. I will say this, if the board chooses to adopt these goals tonight and put them in policy, we always have, it's a local policy. We always have the opportunity to go back and to do this. We can meet our statutory requirement and continue to work on these things. Your expression's in there and our expression's in there as well, that we need to do better for all of our kiddos and those that have been traditionally not performing where we need them to be.
And I don't want to make it seem like I'm putting all the responsibility on the district by any means. I think that the community somehow has failed an aspect of being a vital part and, and they, I think the community needs to step up and see what they can do. Tyler is a great community and have a lot of resources. And I think that we need to call up on our resources so that we can all be working towards this issue, not just TISD, but the community as a whole.
Thank you for saying that. It'll make my staff feel better.
I, I thought I better say that. I didn't want anybody to attack me.
I've got pretty big skin. You can tell me what you need to tell me.
Oh, yeah.
I've been screenrolling a bunch of Aggies and Longhorns and LSU Tigers back in my heyday. But my staff really does work extremely hard and I appreciate you staying, saying that, that you recognize that they're working hard. We can get better results and we'll continue to do that because that's what we've done.
Well, we wouldn't have improved as much as we have if you hadn't been working hard, you know? It, it's just a shock to me. You know, I'm new. I, I hadn't looked at that before. So it, it, it's blew me out, you know? It's shocking.
Yes, sir.
I had one question on the progress monitoring measures. So they're, they're all essentially grade level specific, projected to pass third grade star. And I was just curious what measure we're going to use to project for a kindergartner, a first grader, second grader? What are we going to use to project passage of star?
Okay, Dr. Hanson, since y'all were over there talking.
What were we talking about?
I know you were talking about what was relevant here, but Mr. or Reverend Hager just asked a very important question that he's going to repeat.
Yes, sir.
And you're going to listen to him.
Yes, sir.
The question was the progress monitoring measures that for across these three areas say students projected to pass third grade star. What's the measure that we're going to use to determine whether or not they're going, they're projected to pass?
So we are using the, the STAR renaissance this, to determine, to project the passing of STAR this year. And then of course TEA also has, has required us to do diagnostic testing for K through two. And we're using the Amplify M class for that, which has a dibbles component.
Okay, okay. Then one just comment overall, I share the same discomfort Mr. Newsom has with these goals. The part that, that allowed me to get comfortable with them now is the uncertainty around COVID. Setting goals right now, when we don't know where our kids ended and we really have no idea where they're, how they're going to show up. To, to, for me to, to pound the table and say, oh, in 2024, we should be doing better. I'm really worried how we're going to do in 2021. And so I'm, I'm comfortable with these goals with the same reservation that I hope we can do better. But from where we sit today, this seems like a fair way to start.
Yeah, usually you're concerned with how your kids are doing in school. All these things have to do with how they're doing in school. And it's like my main goal right now is to get the kids in school, you know, just how are we going to do that? And I, I'll tell you this much, my thoughts also on being in school and the achievement gap. If we don't have our kids working with and in front of teachers, our most vulnerable are going to be falling behind at a higher rate. I feel like we need engagement and, and those kids that are struggling the most need that engagement so they can, they can catch up. So that's just my two cents there.
Well, instructional consistency, instructional equity are buzzwords that people like to use a lot. There's no doubt that that's going to be a big influence on statistical reliability on either STAR or anything else that we do. So I think Austin, when I speak of Austin, I'm speaking in general about the agency, maybe even some legislators now. They've been so hardcore standardized testing, high stakes testing. And y'all know me, I always say that, that our high stakes testing, our assessments, everybody wants to do away with those sometimes, but you got to assess where kids, you have to see if they're learning. It's the high stakes that makes people a little bit uneasy, but during this little period that we're going through right now, I think the things I just mentioned about the inconsistencies in instructional delivery, delivery, inconsistencies at home. The one thing that, that makes our system great or any school system great, whether it be public, charter or private, is that when you go to school, you know that there is going to be some type of equity in the delivery of instruction in there. That most kids are going to get exposed to a certain level of curriculum because you have them there. If, if, if parents choose to, to maybe not send their kids to in-person learning, what is the home environment like? Is there support and encouragement structure there or is there not? So yeah, there's a lot of concern that's there. Don't really have a solution for y'all on that yet. We're working on it. We'll certainly get there. So I think it's been a good conversation on it and we'll continue to work on these as well.
Okay, any other thoughts or comments before I entertain a motion to approve item F? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve item F.
I move that we approve item F.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Absane.
One abstain. So motion carries five, zero with an abstination. Okay, we're moving on to our curriculum instruction consent agenda. And does anybody want to pull any items before I go ahead and, and entertain a motion to approve items A through T? Okay?
I had a question before we do that.
Okay.
On the student code of conduct, the version that I had, excuse me, the version I had electronically didn't show any changes. Are there any material changes to the student code of conduct this year?
Not this year. It's not a legislative year. We expect, you know, obviously next year to get material changes. I think everything was pretty, was worked on fairly well last year. There's been no new guidance come down from TEA in regard to any changes.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions on anything before we go ahead? Hearing none. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve items A through T.
Sub moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, motion passes. Superintendent and staff reports. Okay, first we have a report on cooperative purchasing fees.
In your packet, we have Mary Russell, who's executive director, finance for the district that's here tonight. That, that's in her side of the org chart. We have a report on cooperative purchasing fees. That's an annual report that has to be provided to the school board, just so y'all know what the fees are. Just so y'all know what the fees are for purchasing co-ops. Purchasing co-ops are state, for lack of a better term, it's state bid. State approved bidding. There you go, but on page one thirty, you can go through there and talk about the fees that are associated that if we ever use a purchasing co-op, like the Region Seven Service Center, or, I said it was on page one thirty. There it is, yeah, I just, one more tab over. Or Byboard, or Tasby is a cooperative as well. You can see what the different fees are there for all of those different purchasing co-ops. If you have any questions, we'd be able to entertain those for you. Or maybe Ms. Russell can answer those for you as well.
Okay, thank you. If we don't have any questions about that, we'll go ahead and go to item B, which is return to learn update.
So you have a PowerPoint in front of you that you can follow along. I'll try to do it from my seat right here. I want to put a disclaimer out there first. The week before we broke for summer break, we received T E A guidance, especially on the attendance and the funding and what you could and you couldn't do. During the middle of the break last week, was it last week? No, week before, over the July, after July fourth, the summer break that we usually have, we received public health guidance as well. I think we received something yesterday from the governor as well that gave a lot of authority to public health districts across the state. And you can see where they're utilizing some of those measures already. So in saying that, you know, since March, it's been a very jumpy process. Where we thought we were going to actually come back to school at the very back end of the semester last year, to not even having graduations, then to being allowed to have graduations under very limited circumstances, very limited structures for transportations of students to summer school. Then those got alleviated a little bit, you started talking about capacity limits. And then those got alleviated a little bit. And then we jumped back to where we are today. So the plan that we do have here is for public consumption. We talk about grace on Sundays. We need to talk about it the other six days of the week as well. We realize people are going to be mad if we go back to school. We realize that people are going to be mad if we wound up doing everything digital. We realize there are people that are going to be upset if we have athletics with no one in the stands. We know people are going to be upset if we don't have athletics. So I think that you'll talk to most superintendents and even school boards that just understand that there's just people that are going to be split on what we should be doing and what we're not doing. So what we're trying to do is effectively run a school system that has the digital choice built into it, and that's going to be throughout your plan. We'll also talk about some of the safety and hygienic measures that we're going to be enacting there. This is just an executive summary. A more in-depth plan will be available for public consumption here in the near future. So here we go. Probably just read some bullets to you. Implementing instructional practices to provide consistency across learning environments. We probably need to put as best as possible there. The Blade program is the blended learning and digital education program. Allows students and teachers to transition between in-school and at-home digital learning models if needed. The board here purchased a new LMS, a new learning management system, a unifying learning management system for the district, K through twelve. K through twelve, Dr. Hanson, K through twelve, right? Okay. One-to-one devices and then enhanced Wi-Fi availability. During my COVID updates, I expressed from the podium that we're looking for community partners that have existing internet access for us to partner with so we can go in and help them expand their Wi-Fi capacities. Hadn't had a lot of luck on that because in the areas where we need it most, they don't have internet connectivity. So our campuses, we're expanding the range of our Wi-Fi's on our campuses to two hundred to three hundred feet. Is that about right, technology?
Yes, sir.
Yep, throughout the parking areas so that our kids can, if they don't have internet access at home, our students is asking for one time a week for them to touch our network so that we can transfer the work that they've done and we can transfer assignments and instruction and other communications with the actual student and the parent. I know it's tough to think about that, but we're just asking for one day a week out of that.
I saw bullet point, but, and then I saw the next one. On the one-to-one devices, you know, we had somebody in public comments say something about that. Could you just unpack the process of how it will look whenever a student wants a device or needs a device?
Yeah, there's some models out there across the state. Some models to where even in communities that have a higher rate of low socioeconomic status than Tyler actually does provide a little bit of a fee, not a huge one, but a little bit of skin in the game. Not a huge rental number in there at all. We have not firmed that up yet. But we also know that some of the large urbans, some of the large urban school systems that went to one-to-one in the spring had something like ten thousand Chromebooks, laptops, that they did not get back. So the board's got to understand that if we don't have a little bit of skin in the game, then that is something that, and these kids just kind of left. They don't know where they went. They can't get a hold of them. They can't find them right now. So we're looking at the models that are already out there before we make a determination on that. So I know the press is here tonight. That does not need to be put in there that we are going to do that or that we're not going to do that, okay? Okay, all right?
Okay.
But yes, that is an option there. I can't tell you where I'm leaning one way or the other because we've got to be fiscal stewards of the resources that y'all deploy out no matter what happens. Textbooks, yeah, they don't rent textbooks, but there is a fee if they do lose them or damage them. That is certainly something that would be on the back end of this. But we'll see what happens as that develops over time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, just regarding the comment you just raised about the fee. You said there will be a fee for each student within the district that get a Chromebook?
That has not been decided yet, not been determined yet.
Okay, it won't be decided.
Yeah, I'm not leaning one way or the other.
Okay, great.
Right now, it's just whether or not, what the comfort level is going to be on that. And I'm, it's nothing, you know, money is extravagant no matter what the situation.
Right.
We realize that. But at the same time, the models I've seen do have some opportunities in there for free and reduced lunch, discounting as well.
So in the past, has the district done anything similar to this in regards to tablets going home with students?
Well, not one-to-one, not eighteen thousand of them going out.
I understand that for sure.
And I don't think it's going to be that way anyways. You know, there will be an opt-in of whether or not you want a tablet or not now, or a, excuse me, a Chromebook. Or device. If you don't have a device at home, strongly recommend that you have one. But the folks that have devices at home may not have to do that. But if you're saying that, let's say we put fourteen or fifteen thousand of them out.
Right.
What's the normal process of that? You check them out through the school and it goes home with the student.
Okay.
And then the student back to school. That's with, when we haven't had a one-to-one initiative. But now we're going to have a one-to-one opportunity here. And so that's what we're talking about devising whether or not to actually have a fee associated with that.
Okay, well, I noticed that on one of the documents on the website, on the information about return to school, I think it is, one of the areas, it indicated that it'd be rented, so I wasn't sure about that. I'm just on the clarification.
Like I said, there's some, maybe there might be some discounting available.
Okay.
And we may adjust it. I don't know. Again, I don't really have a feel one way or the other on that. Our tech guys are probably scorching me right now. Of course, they might be shrugging their shoulders, says, well, they're lost or whatever, what are you going to do to them? So, I mean, it's a philosophical thing. We'll see what it comes up with when the final thing comes out.
Right. Another question about the access to the Wi-Fi within the community. I think we had mentioned about hotspots. Are we still looking into that, if that's still a possibility within the communities? I know you talked about partnering with entities that existed in those communities, but have we gone any farther than that?
On buying hotspots?
Right, well, buying them or having access to them. I think something was mentioned about utilizing buses in areas or something like that.
Yeah, so that was what we kind of came up with was that if you retrofitted a bus, it was going to be, it wasn't going to be available at all times.
Okay.
In other words, you'd get the bus, somebody, you'd pay a driver to go sit with the bus, let the Wi-Fi be available, and then pay that driver, and then you have to go dock that bus back in the yard as well. So that's why we came up with, we were just going to expand our Wi-Fi ranges at our campuses.
Okay.
And hopefully you can get to those campuses. Gosh, Friday, I was told to not speak, get right up on the, on this. Sorry.
Welcome to the club.
Yeah, I know. I was warned to not get too close by that guy. So we're going to wind up having our expanded ranges. That was the best that we could do. You know, most of the places that we think, we have a lot of neighborhood schools in our school system. And so if you can get to one of those campuses, expanding the range of that where you're not having to get right up on the door, you can sit in the parking lot or sit very close to the parking lot or the yard of a campus. You could be able to, you'd be able to use the Wi-Fi there.
Okay.
Hotspots are a strategy that some school systems are utilizing. Tasha, is that fifteen dollars a month? Is that what they're saying on that? Right, but it's fifteen dollars a month? Okay. Is that typical?
Well, the first time we got across it, it was like thirty-five dollars. But we did go out that survey and they made provide some deposits, but we would have to match it for, have to have funding.
Yeah, so T E A provided a survey recently and funding may be on the way, or opportunity may be on the way under Operation Connectivity. I've kind of described that here, that that's a big push nationally to expand the broadband connectivity along with working with cellular providers on what could possibly be, at least during this pandemic, an opportunity for hotspots. Whether or not we're going to get that before school starts, who knows? Because it's coming from the state as a pass through the feds, if it happens. So it's something we're open to talking about on hotspots if, as needed. In-school instruction, that's attending class in person five days per week. Again, you'll utilize the Canvas LMS and one-to-one technology while you're at school there. The learn-at-home is the digital learning opportunity that we've already discussed. Both have real instruction, grades, attendance, and accountability. That's a huge improvement than what we had in the spring when we were all trying to figure this out. So yes, absolutely, that's going to wind up happening. Both models have the same curriculum, scope and sequence, pacing, and content. And you may have synchronous or asynchronous instruction going on. Synchronous means at the same time, that you see sometimes as far as a Zoom call, think of it that way, that that could potentially be happening with a group of students. Asynchronous would be something that is recorded or filed in the learning management system for that student to access from their device that may not match up with the synchronous, if they're not able to do it at that time as well. Attendance in both models will count in the same manner. Attendance is extremely important on this. T E A guidance for attendance is still evolving. It's fluid, it's jumpy, every day we get something different. Constituents, well, not every day, but it feels that way, gosh. Constituent Services will assist in connecting remotely for students with attendance and engagement struggles. That's John Johnson's shop, he's got a team over there, actually it's in the building right over here, that'll assist us in making sure that we're trying to figure out a way. If someone's missing, if we can't find them, we will be able to locate them through our constituent services department, see what they need as far as resources go. That's support from the district level. The principals, we depend heavily on the principals. They're the ones that are going to know their students the best. Their teachers are going to know their students the best as far as being able to reach out to them. Once the principal struggles so much that they may not be able to connect with the students, then that's when they can engage constituent services. Here's some other additional technology enhancements. We have access to Office 365 and certainly with an update of Google Docs. Certainly, that's a, the first two bullets are boons for our staff as well. Microsoft Teams collaboration, that's a Zoom-like tool with inside of Teams along with other types of messaging, et cetera, for intranet opportunities. Piling various options for in-classroom remote teaching and then updating our virtual desktop infrastructure, that's VDI, to enhance our video and audio. We struggled a little bit with the bandwidth and the, when everybody was using it. I think everybody's kind of gone through this, that you kind of have a little bit of a slowing down or maybe some static or jumpy or you can't get on, but we've been able to update our VDI. Social emotional learning and mental health well-being, we're all concerned about this. Giving training to our employees on mental health and trauma-informed grief and awareness. Social emotional lessons on self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, responsible decision-making. Y'all just approved a district-wide initiative for a Leader in Me program. That's part of the, we want to give our kids the good stuff and that's going to be able to be proctored. Our teachers and our principals and our campus staffs trained so that they'll be able to provide that even in an online environment. The outstanding things that come with Leader in Me. Counselors will be available, obviously, in person, by phone, email, or virtually. And there are online referral forms on our campus website, so we want to make sure we emphasize that. We have Care Connect that assists new students with transitioning to new campuses and then provide resources, information to assist students and families. Out of student support services, this is where special education and 504 are housed. Again, this is an executive summary of this before the full plan actually goes out for public consumption. Parent-student communication to ensure student progress and success. Again, this is special education and 504. Program services information released once individual plans are finalized. We still have I E Ps, the Individualized Education Plans. Accommodations and modifications supported in face-to-face and virtual formats. Let me just say kudos to our transportation department as they assisted our special education department and continued to serve students whenever we were at the back third of the school year before we missed those in-person opportunities. We'll continue to have success there. Collect student data to make instructional decisions. Again, grades will be due. Feedback will be given by our teachers back to the students. Special education services will be able to monitor that, those intervention services virtually and in conversations with our campus staff as we go through this process. Return to learn protocols, we've got a lot of practice of this this summer, whether it be working in our offices or through Rose City Summer Camp or through summer school. Obviously, everyone knows what the COVID-19 signs, symptoms, and the response and appropriate protocols. We will train all of our staff that hadn't been with us, that have been experiencing this. Train students and staff on hygienic practices, such as hand washing and other mitigation practices, social distancing whenever possible. You know, I was on a Zoom call, locals, kind of a, let's talk Tyler. I think one of the persons on there said, you know, A and B days and six feet apart. And that was before Governor Abbott came out and said, you're going to be open every day. But the six feet apart thing, that's extremely difficult. I mean, we're going to do the best we possibly can to not stack people on top of each other. We're going to have to do a good job of kind of retraining how we walk in the hallways. We're gonna have to do a good job of kinda retraining how we walk in the hallways. Masks, wearing masks to make sure that we're protecting not only ourselves, but our peers and our friends and our colleagues. Just gonna have to get used to that, and that is gonna be something that we are going to require. So mask on our, on our, on the, on the age-appropriate kids, certainly, and then on our, on our staff as well. And I know that that's a hard thing to overcome. You're talking to a guy that it took me three months, four months to get wanting to do that, but it's my honor and my duty to protect Mr. Martinez and for Mr. Martinez to, to protect me, even though we've been around each other a lot. Screening and isolation, starting to teach our staff how to, how to self-screen as far as what's going on, you know, all the different symptoms that, that you've read, everything. If you don't have these symptoms, then you don't need to, to attend a meeting. If you don't have these symptoms, you don't need to participate. If you don't have any of these symptoms, then you're good under certain conditions, maybe wearing a mask. We're gonna expect our parent or guardian to screen the student before the school, before school starts. Parents cannot send a student to school if the student has COVID-19 symptoms. And the COVID-19 Process MAP flowchart for help with quarantine isolation, decision-making will be available. PPE, that's, who would have known what PPE was before we actually started this? I'm sure some of you military folks would understand what PPE is, but us civilians probably never knew what PPE stood for. Mr. Bo, do you know what that stands for? Personal Protective Equipment. Students and, it's up there on the screen. Students and staff provided one reasonable-use face covering. Disposable masks are available on campuses and buses only when necessary. So think about how many masks we received. Is Rachel in here? She's in the other room? Is it a hundred and ninety thousand masks? Something like that. So if you think about that, if we gave a mask to every one of our students every day, y'all are smart people, we'll be out of mask on day eleven or twelve, if, if all eighteen thousand showed up on the same day. So those are gonna be used for emergency purposes. Certainly, we wanna provide our staff, I think a lot of our staff are gonna provide their own masks like we all do as well. We also received about two thousand face shields. Right now, we're thinking that those face shields will go to our teachers in the classrooms. We have about fifteen hundred there as well, considering bus drivers as well, the ones that are really... Hey, Rachel? Hundred and ninety thousand masks about there? Hundred and sixty-four, okay. How many face shields? Okay, so twenty-two hundred. So y'all kinda get the gist on this as well. You know, there's gonna be a lot of free will at this, but there's also gonna be a lot of requirements that we're gonna want our staff to, to use if we're in person. There's the face shield, there you go. Parents responsible for cleaning reusable masks or replacing them as time goes on. Being responsible citizens, just like we all are. Campus visitors, visitors have to be approved, or, or, excuse me, visitors and approved district volunteers will be screened. That's still a, a subject we're discussing about visitors to campuses. Certainly with parents, that's a little different thing. I mean, obviously, if your kid's up there, you can, you can access your child at campus. That's gonna be something we really need to, to maybe pay attention to. Still have them screened, obviously, with, with taking temperature, et cetera. Essential meetings, maybe even after-school clubs at the secondary level held by appointment or in virtual format. Face, face covering's worn according to the latest executive order. Again, this thing is so fluid, who knows what five weeks is gonna look like from here? Outside deliveries limited to the front office and the front office only. We were already doing a lot of these things. Obviously, you know, this illness, even though it is, it is a different type of illness, it does have some of the same characteristics of transmission as things that we deal with very frequently, i.e. the flu and the, the common cold. So the use of electrostatic sprayers for superior sanitation is something we will be doing inside of our classrooms, in, and on our school buses, in high-traffic areas throughout our facilities. Nightly? That's a nightly operation, is that correct? And that's what we're doing right now in Rose City Summer Camps as well. So we've got good practice with it. We did order some of the solution enough to, to get us pretty far down the, in the school year. So supply chain is something that's, that's been somewhat of a, of an issue, but we were, we were ahead of, ahead of schedule on that. High-touch points, special attention, professional-grade cleaning products and techniques are, will be used daily. Hand sanitizers available on buses, campus entrances, hallways, classrooms, common areas. Y'all have seen a lot of that already around in our facilities. And then obviously, disinfectant wipes provided in classrooms. Somebody's, some folks have been asking about school supplies. And so we may wind up saying, you know, school supplies might look a little bit different this year. We may wanna ask for hands, or not hand sanitizer, yeah, sure, hand sanitizer, but even the disinfectant wipes, and maybe instead of a couple, four packs of pencils, let's, let's do that instead because that's ridiculously expensive as far as the, the sanitizing wipes go and what we, where we could run out in a very short amount of time after a big expenditure. Isn't that right, Tasha? We were talking about that the other day?
Yeah.
Health and safety protocols are a big deal. Specific plans will be included in the plan for entry, exit, and transitions so that we can reduce large groups in close contact. The good thing about our high schools is they're both gonna be on block schedules this year. In former years, you were talking about a nine-period, a nine-passing-period day. You've pretty much eliminated that in half, or cut it in half to, I think, four or five now. All areas of school operations, student experience examined, and we've, we've reimagined some of these things. Bus transportation, again, parents, students check temperatures before entering the school bus each morning. Face masks worn on the bus. Hand sanitizer mounted at the entrance of the door. We'll continue to, to, to coach our students to be able to use those hand sanitizers when they get on the bus. Buses are be sanitized daily with the electromag, wait, electrostatic solution that we've purchased, the Fog. Is that right, electrostatic? Okay. After each route and between each shuttle to Career Technology Center. Lunch is a big question that people are wondering about. Breakfast and lunch in the cafe and or classrooms. That's gonna kinda be a, a, a very fluid thing as well. We are looking at the possibility, strong possibility of grab-and-go style meals. I asked the question today, if we don't have to limit ourselves to ham and turkey sandwiches for those grab-and-go meals, can we maybe do some Hot Pockets as part of that as well? So at least you can have a hot meal every now and then, a hot something every now and then. Looking at, we actually have scanners for secondary student ID cards at checkout, so there's not that exchange for, of money, et cetera, back and forth. And then again, the sprayers to sanitize the food-serving areas, the kitchens, and the cafeterias between service times. Extracurricular activities, as far as the UIL goes, I know that they, rumor was that they were trying to get something pushed out today, but because of the urban areas, I think going to these very restrictive, almost shutdown, I think that they're looking at trying to figure out a way to, 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 to adjust. You know, if, if, let's say Dallas County says that they're not going to do anything until middle of October, well, Lee's district is us, three Mesquite schools, and then the two Rockwall schools. So Rockwall County's not, in that scenario, wouldn't be locked down, but Mesquite and Dallas, Dallas Skyline's in there as well, and Dallas Skyline would be. And so you're looking at a three-team district. So there's no doubt the UIL has a lot of challenges ahead of them because of the variations of the size of our school systems and our schools and where COVID is really impacting their communities and what that might do to extracurricular activities. We've had good success so far with our summer camps, on our, all of our athletic teams, et cetera, and the minimum amount of time that we've had for our bands to, to begin preparations as well. Strict protocols for facility and equipment use and sanitation, and actually coming to and from athletics and band, et cetera. We've had pretty good systems in place for that. And then obviously, the practices and performances will, will follow safety protocols. We have not gotten any guidance in regard to, if we were to actually host a football game, what the crowd would look like at that time? What, what interaction the band would have, what cheerleading, cheerleading would look like as well. So once those things come down the pack, we can insert those into our plan best as possible. Human resources, there's something we... Family First Coronavirus Response Act gives some opportunities in there for some FMLA-type of leave. Is that right, Mr. Jones? When I'm saying that right? It's, it's pretty, it's not very long. So if there's a COVID-related absent, absence by staff person, it does wind up running out a little bit, or explain a little bit of that to, to the board with the microphone in front of you.
Are you talking with our FRIKA?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what we're referring to.
Sorry, we, in-house, we, we refer to it as FRIKA.
Yes, there are different stipulations depending on the employee's specific situation that governs what we do with them from, and employ your perspective and what they have to do, whether it's a situation, if it's a child that's home and they have to be home with that, with that child, then there are certain stipulations that kick in at that time as opposed to if it's them that's being sent home to quarantine because they've come into exposure with someone. And it, there are several different bulleted points that are there with the Family's First Coronavirus Response Act that it's, it's kinda convoluted, but we have our in-house expert in Artemis that deals with that and will get with that employee so that they know exactly what they are looking at as it pertains to their being out. If it's a situation, they may get two-thirds of their pay for two-week, for a two-week period of time. They may be able to couple their, combine some of their sick time or leave, district leave time to make up the difference in that pay for a specific amount of time. But the scenarios differ, and it depends on the specifics of that particular situation. And so we will definitely stay tuned in to that. And there's a process that the employee has to engage in order to take advantage of, I don't wanna say take advantage of, but to engage the, the process, and it's located on our website.
Got a staff survey that's still out there, got about seven days left on that. Substitutes will be needed throughout this process. You know, the recruitment of them, the orientation of, training for special needs classes, and obviously, safe schools or something that, that will be challenges for us to get those folks trained up as, and certified as a, as a district substitute. Personnel planning, we have, we've been conducting new employee orientations. Did we have one today? I said, it was on my calendar.
No, we did not have one.
Did not, I didn't get to it.
Twenty-eighth, it's on the twenty-eighth, yes.
But we've had a few of those already, and we're having success in recruiting folks to come to Tyler to, to work, and good-looking folks. And I think that our, our HR department, along with our campus principals, have done an outstanding job of filling our vacancies, traditional vacancies. And even during this time, it's just kinda strange that we're having the success we're having as far as being able to recruit, recruit quality individuals. It's great, it's great. Adjustments made according to needs as well, as, as that. So that's the executive summary. Certainly, the, I hate reading every bullet point to you, but some of y'all have talked to me and felt like you needed a pretty in-depth exposure to this. Will, certainly, the large document will be released later on, soon later on, yeah. Any questions?
Just one question regards, the outside delivery is limited to the front office now, like things that go to the cafeteria, will they check in at the front office and be delivered via their company? Or would our staff have to be doing that process?
Food service deliveries?
Food service deliveries, right.
Usually, those big trucks wind up going around to the loading dock back there. So we, we will, we will have structures in place for them to be able to check their temperature, et cetera, and whatnot. And a lot of contactless deliveries, I'm sure, are occurring right now because they've had to adapt from their own company's standpoint, not just the district's standpoint.
Okay.
So on the buses?
At the parents? We, we are leaving it up to the parents to make sure that their child does not have a fever?
On the bus. It's, it's logistically impossible to check the temperature of every student that gets on our bus. Is that what we've, we've been talking to other districts about as well? Okay.
So will it be checked again when they go to school?
When we get to the campus, yes, ma'am, absolutely. So that's why we want the mask worn on the bus. Parents need to encourage the kids to wear their mask the entire time they're on the bus.
So do we have a questionnaire that, did your mama give you four Aspens before she put you on the bus? Just curious.
Yeah, we, there's other districts, and we even looked into maybe an app for folks to, but we realize not everybody can, can fill out the app. But certainly, a reminder every week, they can go home in an at-home packet can be something that, that says that if you, you're certifying that you're, that your child's healthy if you put them on the bus.
Yeah. So it's gonna be imperative that the parent understand that responsibility
Sure.
of making sure that their child is not running a fever when they get on that bus.
That's correct, any symptoms.
Right.
Yep.
The issue of employee continuity, until, we talked about benefits for people who have kids at home. I'd just been thinking about students and teachers, but they're also parents as well. Are there best practices or guidelines around determining when we don't have enough people to actually do school? You know, the situations where we may have to close an individual school purely because of personnel availability?
Yeah, I'm uncomfortable putting a number to that, you know, until we get into this. This is unprecedented. You know, talking about our secondary campuses, they may have a, a way around this. They've got enough, of course, our secondary campuses have the most staff of any of our campuses to where they can do some things, to where monitoring or covering a class with support staff and then using our LMS may provide some relief on that. Where I'd really get concerned about would be the elementary level because they're, they're pretty tightly staffed as it is. So I, I do think you bring up a good point, and would be something that we'll have to keep, we'll monitor, keep an eye on. Same thing on the actual illness, is same thing we do with flu. It's gonna have to be something that's monitored on a very routine and regular basis to determine the actions that we do toward that campus as well. We kinda talked about this back in the spring, we thought we were gonna come back a little bit, or how would you handle that when we only thought we were gonna be out for a couple of weeks? And I think it's the, the same philosophies there, that there's not a firm number that you utilize to say that that, that campus shall shut down at that number. I think it's gonna be one of those deals of our, our capacity and our tolerance levels on maybe an illness or whatnot.
Have we considered increasing the number of substitute teachers that we have in our reserve?
We're always, we're always looking for substitute teachers. There's no doubt about that. But hiring more teachers, we have, we're pretty tightly staffed.
Yeah.
For one, because, I mean, I don't know if you saw this today or not, but the comptroller said, I think we're four-point-nine billion in the hole already projected for fiscal '21. So that's this next coming fiscal. And so we've already done a lot of preparation for, for that. And I think that's about what we increased public ed this, this last time. So I think that that's gonna be something that's gonna be pretty, pretty imperative that we keep an eye on as we roll in this next school year, and that we have done some preparation upfront for that. Criticized or not about that, I think that that was a smart thing that this board allowed us to do. So going and hiring more, hiring more teachers to be pinch hitters and be on deck in case something happens.
Right.
Available funding is going to determine that as we go forward. As far as actual substitute teachers, we're always wanting a big, a large pool of substitutes. And I think we, we offer a pretty attractive pay and opportunities there. And I think we have, we offer a pretty attractive pay and opportunities there. So, if you're listening tonight and you want to be a substitute teacher, call HR.
Well, I know it's a fluid situation. Day-to-day, we're always finding out something new or some order or something like that, so we've got to be flexible, and I appreciate you giving us all this information. If you had a crystal ball starting on time as far as the calendar goes?
Man, why are you asking me?
Well, because the people want to know.
Look at the cameras, they're all looking at.
Had to be asked.
Look, it's, we're five weeks out.
Right.
And that's not my style, I hope it's not your style, to make that call in this far in advance. Now, some of the larger districts have to do some things logistically to make that announcement here. I think we're in a good position to start on time. If we need to adjust, we can adjust. We've built on days on the back end of our calendar, and who knows? If the data, if the state, if that, if the environment requires us to do that, then yeah, that's a strategy, but I'm not committing one way or another on whether or not we're going to start later. Right now, the plan is to start August 19th, whether that be in-person or digital, which we should have available.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions about that presentation or comments? Okay, well, thank you for that. Now, moving on to item C, high school names submission process and timeline. Obviously, it's something people are curious about, so.
Yeah. So, there's a proposed name change timeline. We've had a little bit of discussion before, during the policy conversation. This is actually the timeline, and again, I'm game for y'all to give me advice or guidance or direction if you want to change this, but my understanding was you wanted to try to maybe get this done prior to school starting. You have a board meeting on August the 6th, and so, we kind of started from there and working backwards. It's a special, it's, excuse me, it's a workshop. So, August 6th workshop, we worked backwards from there. Here's tonight, presents the timeline. You've already adopted policy. District sends a media advisory on dates and processes for campus name submission that should require after tonight's meeting, is that correct, Ms. Hines?
That's correct.
Tomorrow morning, the district opens its campus name submission window on our website, right there on the front of it, and it runs through August 3rd. Emails and other submissions will be accepted. If you want to send an email to us, we'll figure out where to get it, if you don't want to actually do the actually online submission. But it needs to meet policy criteria for official consideration. We'll collect everything, but as far as official consideration goes, please meet the policy criteria. We will send out frequent communication to parents, students, and constituents that we have contact information for. Obviously, the media's here tonight, the digital media's here, and the print media's here tonight. I'm sure they'll do a good job in continuously reinforcing on this issue as they have in reporting on it. Communication to our parents and our students, our constituents, email, texts, phone calls, social media, and obviously, on Tyler ISD TV, channel 19 on Southern Lake. First reminder of campus name submission will be sent to parents on Saturday, July 25th, and constituents and students. Again, y'all know how we're going to do this, I think social media is a really good platform to remind folks how to do that. There will be a link on those reminders that actually will take you to the district webpage so you can actually put your submission in on your recommendation. Those recommendations, you will put on, you'll put a phone number on there, you'll put an email address, and you'll actually put your address on there as well. So, someone from Germany, we're not going to give too much credence to someone who's living in, living in Germany. This is a Tyler thing. Focus group meets to review on, and discuss collected submissions and consider possible campus name recommendations on July 27th and July 29th. Another reminder goes out on July 30th, and then, a final reminder on August the 3rd will be sent out as well, 12:00 PM, the district, that's noon, when the district will close the campus main name submission window. Focus group meets again that day to review the final submissions, provide further input to the Executive Director of Communications. August 6th board workshop agenda is going to be posted by 11:00 AM that day. We won't post the recommendations on there, that'll be brought to you at the August 6th board workshop, but we will post the agenda item that says that y'all have discussion and possible action to choose. August 4th, Ms. Hines, Executive Director of Communications, will provide the focus group comments and list of possible names to the superintendent. Focus group meets one final time as needed. Thursday, August 6th is the 11:00 AM board workshop. No more than three names per school to the board, and the board selects new names, and then, we're going to have a discussion of phase-in logistics and timelines. For instance, right now, my recommendation, and we don't need to talk about it again, y'all need to look, think about this, is to not spend any more money on, right now, on the infill of the name that's already up there. I think that we should wait until Christmas to do that. Now, y'all, that's just an idea? As far as Lee goes and JT, I think we need that space to be pretty clear because it's going to take two weeks for install, and it's also going to wind up being, or two weeks for demolition as well. And I think if you wind up trying to rush and do all that right now, you're going to wind up, we have school starting. So, if we could consider possibly waiting for the names to be taken off school around Christmas time as opposed to spending that, I think that the symbolic gestures was, had been made per y'all's vote last Thursday. Let's get the names decided, let's order the materials, and do the, I hate calling it demolition, but let's do the replacement of the front of the schools at that time when students are not in school. That'd be something for y'all to think about. That's what we're talking about in discussion of phase-in logistics and timelines, along with apparel. That was another topic of discussion the other night. How are we going to handle the apparel situation? As well as VPA as far as getting, taking care of all of the different cases and things like that. You have other things that you need to talk about as well. Talk about alma maters and things like that, that we need to figure out how we're going to adjust, to adjust those to fit the board's vision for what y'all chose to do last Thursday night, and then whatever name that you choose for each school. So, that's my timeline publicly for y'all to consume. Are there any questions on that?
When you say students, are you talking about just the local students, or can previous students, alumni students vote, or is it just current?
Yeah, I refer to those as constituents.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Do they live in Germany?
Well, if they live in Germany, maybe that's a bad example. You've got to have a connection to this community to be able to participate in this for validity purposes, more than anything, and I think that that's where the interest is. That's the best way we can capture as well. Of course, we've got the focus group that's kind of monitoring that as well, that we think that can kind of help sift through some of those things that may be so far out there that don't need to get in front of y'all.
No, thanks for, for lining that out. I think that it's very clear, and I appreciate that students and coaches and principals and constituents will be a part of that process, and I think it's well-rounded. I think it's, gives plenty of time for people to submit, I mean, submit names for review, and then, but it's also quick enough for us to go ahead and act on, should we choose to on possibly August 6th, depending on how everything goes? So, and then, we can discuss those, those next steps in August, and I'm sure plenty of people will have thoughts on that, so. Any other comments on this or questions?
Comment, comment, I will comment, because I was real concerned about return to learn. And this information is currently on the website, and anybody can access it by going directly to the website and finding it.
The executive summary? Is this on the website, the executive summary?
It will be tomorrow.
It will be tomorrow.
Yeah, it will be.
Okay.
Yeah, it will be tomorrow.
Okay, great. Great, that's good, that's nice to know, because I had problems finding stuff, you know? So, I'm learning.
It'll be up there, and I'll be good.
One comment on the proposed name change. Do agree with the assessment that there's plenty of time for the community to provide input. I'm a little anxious about the board finding out on August 6th what the recommended, recommended names are, and the way this is written, it just says the board selects the new names. If we're going to narrow it down to a list, we probably need, I know I personally would like some time to consider those names and not be asked to make a decision in the very same meeting that I just found out the names are. I don't know how that impacts website rollout, the other issues that you're wrestling with here, but that, that would be, unless somebody picks some awesome names that just, you don't even need to think about, it seems like having a step in here where we get the opportunity to consider these and get feedback on them as well, I think that would be an important part. Hopefully, these are names that last fifty-plus years.
Just one thought off the cuff is if, if we wanted some time to review, possibly, if we wanted to come back with a special called get together, you know, shortly thereafter, you know, give us a few days to let them sink in, we could, we could do that. I mean, but we do have some time to think about that workaround. I think the August, having at least three by August 6th is important to me to go ahead and have, have that final list, and then, discretion of the rest of the board, whatever everybody else thinks, we can decide if we want to, you know, have some sort of special call, meeting to make a final decision, if we need it, I don't know, maybe there's.
August 6th is a Thursday.
Right.
So, remember, you've got to have 72 hours of a special call meeting.
Yep, right.
Rules, rules are rules, so y'all, y'all know.
Which would be, yeah, I mean, we could even, well, we could even set it, we could even set it for the next, you know, Monday or Tuesday or something like that.
We wouldn't necessarily have to vote on them, but I think, I agree with Mr. Hager about having them, you know, prior to the meeting of something so that we can review it and think about it before making that decision all in at one setting. I think that that's quite a bit of pressure from that standpoint, and not thinking things through sometimes thoroughly enough. So, if there's some way that that could be built into the timeline that we would have access, and naturally, we would not publicize that information without permission, so.
It'll be public as soon as you get it.
Hey, well.
So, there you go.
Well, well, that, that may not be as bad as we think.
I've heard you, so I think that that, we can certainly go ahead and consider maybe on that Monday or Tuesday, a special call meeting, but here's what I, I think we leave it open. If you want to make a vote that day, you can. If not, we'll go ahead and have that posted, and if we got to, if we cancel it, we cancel it, but that way, you can get the names, y'all can do whatever you want to do with them because it's your baby. If you choose not to do anything on that date, then y'all can hit it on the special call meeting.
I don't like high-pressure sales, so.
I'm not going to be.
I don't like to make decisions in the spur of the moment.
I'm not going to pitch anything to you, but I can understand the pressure that you're talking about.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds fair.
Yep.
Well, thank you. Are there any other comments or questions on that specific agenda item before we move on to future business?
Okay. But you can do it on Monday? Okay. Special call meeting that Monday, too, also.
All right. Special call meetings are fun. Okay, so, future business, we got school is cool, board workshop, those are both August 6th. August 19th, big asterisk, first day of school for students.
Thanks, Mr. Washington.
Uh-huh, and then, we have a regular meeting on August 24th, and maybe in between there, special call meeting.
Yeah, August 10th, maybe, so.
Possibly August 10th.
Those are, yeah, school is cool is a cool event. It's going to look a little different this year, be a drive-through, but I think there's backpacks that are still going to be provided. Backpacks that are still going to be provided to our community through our very benevolent partners. This, the Chamber does a great job, the Business Education Council does a great job of, Latoya Young, want to make sure we give her a shout-out, she does a great job of executing that program. In case y'all didn't know, last year, every backpack that was provided was, was bought, I think, by UT Tyler, and then, we were able to, the other funds was able to stuff everything, all the supplies in those backpacks. Of course, every backpack, Dr. Tidwell made sure they had a UT Tyler emblem and logo on it, so it's a great recruiting tool for all of our kids in our community.
See what you did there. Okay, well, I'll go ahead, if there's no other comments or questions, entertain a motion for adjournment.
So, moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right. Meeting is adjourned.